Open, well, we got a seven o'clock applicant KG Sign Group requesting a special permit on the 7.7.6.7 electronic message center signs of the Auburn zoning bylaws for erection of electronic message sign at 760 Southbridge Street. I'll take a motion in the open hearing.
Motion open.
A second.
All in favor? Good evening. Is it Mr. Buckholz? Could you go up to maybe to the microphone and...
My name is Joseph Buckholz. I'm with KG Sign and Graphics. I'm here on behalf of Pools and Ques. The owners of Pools and Ques are here as well as a representative from Dactronics, the manufacturer of the message center. What we're proposing to do is put up, replace their freestanding sign with a new sign, illuminated top pools and queues, as well as a message center insert that they can use to advertise products and services. They're, as you could tell by their name, they're a multifaceted business with a lot of different products and services, and the message center is the most effective way to advertise all the new products and services they offer.
And I know we received your packet with the picture. Before we open up the questions from the board, do you want to give us any comments in terms of what were your plans, or actually the building owner too? Well, the plans for the sign, like what type of messages were you looking?
Typical spring sale, summer sale, new models of Jacuzzis are in stock, maybe have a picture of a vacation-style backyard to kind of emphasize that they're... The latest craze is a lot of these, what they call them staycations, and if you have an image of that, it's a nice marketing tool for people to kind of come in and look at their products. And mostly it's to inform them of products and services that they have.
Have you had a chance to look at the bylaws in terms of all the limitations in terms of...
Yes. I understand there's certain conditions that will be applied to it. The property owner is here to agree to the terms and conditions and respond to any concerns you may have.
Okay. I'll open up to any board members that have any questions.
I have a question for you through the chair. One of the special conditions is that the background is going to have to remain a consistent color from one message to the next.
Yes.
And I do, I just heard you say you were going to have maybe a picture of a backyard.
Well, it's like if you look at the display of what we have on there...
Right.
That's an example of an image they'd like to put on there.
So it would be...
It's not going to move, it's not going to animate, it's just going to be a solid...
Understood, but if I were to literally read the bylaw, it would say that once you change that image, if it let, and we'll use this as an example, once you changed it to strictly an alpha message, you know, character, okay, you wouldn't, the background would change so that, and I don't have a problem with it, I would just say that whatever going forward, that if the permit is, ends up being granted, that that particular portion of the bylaw would have to be addressed.
If I may address that concern, I interpret that as the background for that particular message being constant and not variegating and changing and maybe having a little bit of a, that's how I interpreted that particular section of the bylaw.
If you read it, it says from one message to the next.
Well, again, I would say the next message background would be the background of the sign. I understand...
Again, I don't have a problem, I just want to be sure that we don't have a problem going forward in the future with it.
Right.
I understand your interpretation, I just, I interpreted it differently if I...
Just taking the literal interpretation right from the words.
May I, because I...
Yes, Dennis.
Just over your interpretation, I broke part of this, okay? It is to remain static as far as the background.
Yes.
In other words, not changing all the time.
Correct.
And just for background for the, I mean, when this first came for town meeting, the first time, they got voted down because the town really didn't like these signs. It took a lot of negotiating and pretty strict on the interpretation, not to be interpreted in different ways so that we have all these things. It's pretty literal of what town meeting was able to accept, or else it would have been voted down again.
Right.
So they're pretty set in stone on what's going to be on as far as limitations. What colors or lights do you plan on using in there?
This is what's called a full color, so if it is more of a graphic image, it'll look more like the picture with some, with a, of a picture image, and then if it's a text message, it would be based on the color of the text. This particular board is really not limited by the amount of colors, but if each message is individual to itself, so if each message had its, would have just their own colors and it wouldn't be constantly changing within each message.
Well, do you know that because when you're within thirty, 300 feet of an intersection, you can't use red, you can't use green, and you can't use yellow?
Did not know that.
Maybe you should read the rest of the bylaws.
I didn't see that part, no.
There's a lot in here that you're probably, you know, not conforming with. Size, it would be one...
No, we're within the size requirements. I ran this through Adam at the planning department in the building office, and he said this is within the size restrictions is fine.
You can only go 25% of the sign.
This is what it is. Fifteen, there's 15 square feet, you're allowed 60 square feet.
Yeah, no, it's, your sign is 52 square feet.
No, that's, that's not what I, I went, specifically asked that question, you're allowed to go to the maximum allowable size of 25, that's from the building inspector.
I know, yeah, I know.
I'm not going to argue with you, but I had that specific question with it.
Yeah. No, it's a percentage of the sign itself.
Yeah.
It's a percentage of the sign.
I would ask that you clarify that with the building department in the future.
Okay, I mean, we could, I mean...
No, I'm not, I'm just saying.
I wrote it.
I specifically asked that question.
No, I mean, I literally wrote this with Adam. It's a percentage of the sign.
I specifically asked those questions, and I was told you're allowed 15 square feet max.
And Adam's...
Now, I can make the sign bigger to...
The sign.
I can make the sign up to 60 square feet if that's critical, but I don't think it's necessary.
We're only going that, what the bylaw states, and it really, it's of the sign itself. So in other words, it's not a hypothetical of 60 feet, so if you only had an eight-foot sign and the whole thing, the idea was not to do that, it's only to have a certain percentage of the sign. Again, this is the only reason how it passed town meeting to even have these signs in town.
Well, I would again state that I went through all this with the building department, I was told this was acceptable size as interpretation of the sizing.
Hey, Will, have any questions?
Through the chair, if I may, I'm just curious about the placement of the sign on the property as it relates to the traffic light.
Yes. Do you know where the existing sign is?
I do.
It's roughly going, replacing that sign, but it's going to be subject to the 10-foot setback from the street.
Mm-hmm. So for the most part, the sign will be advertising up and down Route 12 and not interfere with the...
If you're sitting at the light and you turn your head, you can see it, but it's really addressing the Route 12 traffic both directions.
My only concern is people turning left and right off of the side street there onto Route 12, obviously, you know, interfering with their point of view.
Oh, it's further, it's closer to the building, it really won't interfere with their view. As far as safety, it won't be interfering with their safety.
Anyone in the audience?
Anyone in the audience here for this? Yes, maybe could you step up the microphone, just, although we know who you are, but if you want to maybe just give your name and...
Through the chair, Bob Plutukas, 231 Milbury Street, town meeting member, precinct one. I hope that you'll make any, let town meeting make any changes in this. This was discussed in depth at town meeting, and the present bylaw was passed. Each of the objections I have to this hold together like a web, and they basically deal with safety. Death has happened near that intersection, the Yucatanous girl was killed by, I believe, a truck going too fast. We know now that any distraction, anything that takes your eye off the road causes accidents. I don't believe that that's debatable anymore. And we know, I drive the S curve, the Holy Cross every morning, my eye goes right up to the sign changing the messages. Where do they have the most accidents? Right in that area. I drove Park Avenue the other day, it looks like Las Vegas. The businesses change the sign every few seconds, it's a highly trafficked road, and it's dangerous. If you don't believe me, please drive down Park Avenue, it is like Las Vegas, and the signs change, boom, 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 boom. I'd like to see the town of Auburn stay at town, though I see a lot of people trying to turn it into a Framingham. And I'd like to keep as much of the town atmosphere as we can. I live in Milbury Street, and we've seen a lot of influence from outsiders changing Milbury Street drastically, to the point where the road just fell apart a few years ago. My last concern deals with the number of curb cuts, and that has been a town concern on Southbridge Street since 1996, I believe. And the reason that I say that is I chaired the Veterans Memorial Corridor project for eight years, the final eight years, until its completion. And before Mr. Coyle came, before Mr. Suprenart came, before another engineer came, Mr. Zingarelli went and approached the Elks Club, trying to cut one of those curb cuts out in Wyden West Street. They turned down the deal, even though they were offered an awful lot of things to go with it. The number of curb cuts at a meeting was described as dangerous, and if you were to plan that section of Southbridge Street, you would never put that many curb cuts in there again. It was, some people in town wanted it so much that even Prospect Street, there was a study that cost the town $220,000 to extend Prospect Street by Colony Farms behind Holiday Pizza. It never came to fruition, but that light was part of the project, and the change in the lights on West Street was part of that project. Tied in with this is the new middle school, Southbridge Street and West Street. It's right there. Traffic is going to increase. Anyone who heads down Southbridge Street in the evening knows what a headache that is, and these signs are going to show up, you know, probably at that time, and the eyes are going to go to it. When this came before town meeting, one of the problems was some signs had been allowed to be built already, and there was no enforcement. Are we enforcing those signs that were against the bylaws now? I don't believe we are. And I think we need to, because I want to see Auburn stay at town as much as we can, even though all the pressure is on us to raise the height of the buildings, which would affect our fire department and everything else. But these signs in the name of progress, progress is not always progress. If you go into the town of Bolton, they've maintained their town-like atmosphere. You have the right to farm there, and you can't hunt. But they've meant, they've kept the town atmosphere. If you go into the town of Weston, they have a beautiful highway going through there, and they refuse to have that one extension of it widened with the extremely wealthy homes that are on both sides of it. It's a narrow windy road, it's a highway, because they want to keep the country, country atmosphere. I want to thank you for your time, through the chairman, and those are some of my concerns. If you need anything clarified, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, boss. Any, oh, yes.
I speak for Pools and Ques.
Oh, sure, could you maybe just...
Sure.
...to the mic? Can you just introduce yourself?
I'm Judith Melanson, I own Pools and Ques and spas too. We've been in that location at 760 Southbridge Street about 19 years, and to this day, people still come in and say, "Oh, you sell swimming pools?" Even though we have a display of an above-ground pool on the front landing, "Oh, you sell pool tables, or you sell hot tubs," even though we have a hot tub on the front landing. We don't want to, I've grown up between Southbridge and Sturbridge all my life, so I understand small towns and your concerns. But I've also been in business in Auburn for 22 years, and the sign we have there is an old metal painted sign, it's probably, I don't know how many years old, but as long as we've been there. The sign we're proposing stands on legs, which you can see through at the intersection. It will be set back according to the bylaws. The gentleman from, the two gentlemen from Katie's, Katie's signs are, have looked into all that. And it won't be a flashing distracting light. What we're hoping to get permission to do is, for example, a picture of a hot tub, and it may say, "Zero financing for 60 months through such and such a date," and that picture will stay there as long as your regulations allow. Then at another time, there might be a picture of, "Spring is here, reserve your swimming pool now." But it won't be a constant distraction flashing like some of those stretches that that gentleman mentioned. We kind of really need your help in promoting our business, because if you go to Weston, you go to Oxford, their signage laws are much more lenient, and, you know, it's hard to compete in today's business. I think that's it, unless you have questions.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Dave Charbonneau. I'm here as a representative of the Auburn Webster Lodge of Elks. We have met with our tenants, Pools and Ques, and have approved the sign based upon our experience coming before this board to put the Auburn Webster Elks sign that is presently in place. So I'm just putting my support in from a position of landlord. I'm not sure if it's appropriate or not to address some comments from Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Lastney, Plutukas, concerning the curb cuts. I was part of the board when that process came up, and I believed that the curb cuts was to shut down the curb cut on the West Street. And that was our concern from the lodge's perspective. Because of trying to exit through the Southbridge Street driveway at the Elks during rush hour, there's no way you can get across and take a left out of the lodge, and our West Street driveway permits members to go out the side and get to a light and be able to move down Southbridge Street at either direction. So that's my recollection of that, and I just wanted to clarify that. Any comments or concerns?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The cut to be eliminated was the one on Southbridge Street, because that's where all the accidents were happening. And the, not only were we going to improve behind Pools and Ques, which is the Elks property, through the grant from the federal government, this was all grant money, and they were going to fill in some of the wetlands. Mr. Zingarelli had Mr. Didarian, and you can check with VHB. The drawings should be available in the planning department. They had actually, were going to move the West Street exit from the Elks, which they felt, which at that time was expressed was too close to Southbridge Street, 80 or 100 feet down, and fill in the wetlands that were there. That was the plan, soundings were done. I still have the original contract, so it's, it cost the town 220, about $210,000, because I argued with them on some of the things just that didn't need to be done, and they could improve to me that they had been done. But basically, that's, the curb cut was going to be eliminated on Southbridge Street, that was the main, that was the concern. It's just, I mean, if you were to plan that street again, you would never allow that many curb cuts. It's just too dangerous with so many people entering and exiting that area. And when we finished the Veterans Memorial Corridor, you find that we put a sidewalk all the way down that street, so you could actually walk the whole length from Dury Square all the way down to Route 20, which I think was a great improvement. And, but the curb cut was going to be eliminated on Southbridge Street. It was turned down, at that time the president was a good friend of mine, Mr. Paul McCarthy. Unfortunately, he's passed on since then.
Next point. Okay, so I think, I don't...
Through the chair, you have another question.
Yeah.
I would like to revisit what Dennis brought up.
Yeah, actually, yeah, that's a good point I was going to...
We can expand on that if we might, and if you would care to do that, please.
We could probably, want to maybe first, are you ready to close the public hearing?
No, I have another question, actually, it's actually for...
I'm thinking there might want to be, there might necessarily be another comment after.
Yes.
Okay, a question for Nick. At town meeting, Adam said he was going to purchase a little meter for the lights, because we've been having problems.
We do have a light meter.
Finally, we got one?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think the problem, at least part of, for myself, is that...
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. We were promised to get a meter to measure, because these are LED lights, and they can get tense, if you notice the one on Route 20 there.
The ambient light, you're referring to?
Well, yeah, there's certain candle, you know...
Yeah, there's certain foot candle levels that they're not allowed to surpass going up to the property in line.
That's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we had that, because part of my issues with these things is that everyone that's out there right now probably doesn't conform to any part of the bylaws, even though they came in here and said they would. If you notice, they're supposed to turn off.
And what about the square footage that was spoken about?
Okay, square footage, it's the square footage of the sign.
Right.
And the percentage that is...
On this one, it would be 25% of the square footage of the sign.
It's on page 97.
So we...
So at this point...
We are conforming or we're not?
We're not conforming.
We're what?
We're not conforming.
Right.
Right.
So the applicant has two options at this point. They can either reduce the sign of the, they can reduce the sign of the LED portion of it, or they can increase the overall size of the sign to 60 square feet.
Right.
To get to 50.
And then they'd be fine.
Correct, so at the end of the day, if...
We still, we would still have the issue of an ambient light meter being used.
Well, we'd have to check on...
Well, that's something that I would do as part of the enforcement, that's not something that the, if the board want to set a level, but I don't believe that that's something that the board would do. We would just say that it comply with the town bylaws as far as exterior lighting and illumination. And then that's something that I would enforce as a code enforcement officer, that, you know, if it does get too bright, if we do get complaints, then I go down, I take the measurement, and we adjust the lighting as appropriate.
And Nick, how about, Dennis had a good point about, when you look at page 94 in the bylaws, about no red, yellow, or green within 300 feet of the intersection? Is that something as a board, we don't have to specifically discuss that, that's just a requirement?
Correct. That is, that is a written aspect of the bylaws, that is, that's, if the board wants to put it in as a condition, you can do that, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in as a condition, because that is a part of the bylaw that is enforced by me, and it's something that's clearly stated throughout.
Okay, so it sort of inferred that...
And again, like, just, just to let you know, because there's, it's quite extensive on this part of the sign bylaw, meant to be, because it didn't go through town meetings. So we said, "All right, we're going to put all these conditions, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't have this," and town meeting said, "With these conditions, it's okay."
I just wanted to make sure that everybody heard what you were saying, and that's why I wanted to revisit it and...
If it pleased the board, I can address a couple of those concerns. First of all, as far as the ambient light, Bob Messier from Dactronics can specifically speak to that, but one of the reasons we provide and recommend Dactronics is because their sign is designed to adjust automatically to the ambient light around it. The darker it is, the lighter, the less light the sign produces, and it does, their standard is, they call it nits or candle eyes or whatever, but that .3 foot candles is a very accurate assessment of what this sign will light up at night. And they've, Bob can attest to any of that part of it. As far as the square footage recommendations, we can, I can create that panel to make, up the additional 10 square feet to get to the 60. I didn't think it was necessary to get, because the message sign, the sign of the sign, I was, I was, again, I was erroneously understood that you're allowed 15, I thought it was the maximum, so I can, we can adjust, as part of the permit, we can adjust the drawing to make it 60 square feet. That is not a problem for me or the customer, I just, we didn't want to make the sign really, really big. We wanted it to just be nice and fitting in the neighborhood, we didn't want to make it too big, that's why we did it like this. But the 15-foot square message center is kind of how it lays out best for what they want to do, so if I have to adjust the size of the sign as a condition of the permit, I'd be glad to do that.
And if they didn't adjust the size of the sign, then it would be like 12.7 roughly, at the 25% of the 50.84, the pool sign.
Would be how much again?
It'd be 12.7 square feet versus if they, if we had them increase it up to 60 feet, then they could, then it could be the 15 that they're recommending. So I don't know, it depends on, is there a big difference between 15 and 12.7?
Mr. Chair, my question is, what the message center as it stands right now is 15 square Is it advisable to add an additional 10 square feet, which would in fact, to me, block more of the visibility in the area, in order to get it to the 15 square feet desired? So I'm wondering if in this case, since they do have the ability to bring it up to 60 square feet, would it be advisable for the purpose of safety and traffic concerns to allow the 15 square feet, we're talking 12.7 to 15 square feet, it's not a big difference, in the smaller frame?
That's when it's good...
In terms of being for a safety purpose?
And that's when it's good that we're board, so then the board can, you know, people can give different opinions on whatever one...
Sure, I think it's great.
About a 2.3 square feet difference in terms of the illumination.
I mean, I...
But to add an additional 10 square feet to the overall area, now that might be prohibitive in terms of sight, buses when the middle school's built, people turning in and out, now, right now even with six and eight-foot snowbanks sitting around. I'm just curious if that may necessarily not be the right decision.
So in this, in terms of discussion, we know that right now it's allowed up to 25% of the sign area, so I guess we're really not discussing, can they put it in, right? More is...
No, it's, any one of them are with a, with an asterisk or with a special permit.
As long as we feel that it doesn't impact negatively...
So in other words, it's not something that's allowed by right.
Right.
You need a, you need a special permit to put one of these signs in. Again, I'm just going to go back to, the reason for that is because that's what town meeting said they wanted, and town meeting said, and again, it failed the first time through. So we had to go back and go through this, sat down extensively, hashing out, I, we were helping out, the reason we changed the sign was we were helping out businesses because our, our sign bylaw was too restrictive. We had 24 square feet, we said, "We'll go to 60," but then we didn't want to have giant illuminated signs on that, referring to that, which kind of goes to your argument.
Mm-hmm.
Really, we were helping out advertising, because try to put your advertising on 24 square feet.
Right.
So we doubled, tripled our sign bylaw for everyone. Then this issue came up, and we didn't want big signs of illuminated. Town shot it down the first time. Again, it said, "Well, we have to do, well, we'll just make it a certain percentage of the sign."
So in terms of the more, most important special permit criteria, does it negatively impact site distance and traffic safety on public ways?
Well, I kind of agree with Mr. Plutukas as far as they're meant, and this is just advertising, sign people want to advertise. The governmental interest in, or the town's interest is not for them to advertise, it's to have, be safety.
Right.
Okay? If by that, we want to make sure there's, they can see where they're going to go in, they'll see what store is there... see what, what store is there as far as advertising their, their specials and things like that. Honestly, that's just not our interest. It's, it's really the interest of, of safety and I think, I, I, at my first time, I, I voted for this as a town meeting member, I, I voted against it only because I feel they're not safe. Again, the idea of a sign is to draw your attention to the sign. There's no doubt about it, or else why would you put it up there? It's to make sure you look at it. We were specific in how, you know, how long would stay there between changing. Um, I have issues with the ones in town, they're just changing at will. There is no enforcement on it whatsoever, I'm sorry to say, but there is none, there is none...
There are people that ruin it for everybody, I get it.
Um, yeah, unfortunately, the, the same people came in and said the same thing, they were gonna go by the bylaw and unfortunately, it's just, um...
What about reducing?
Well, you know, it's, I think it's more than the size, too. It could come down to, um, any type of changing image in terms of just the traffic because what it comes down to is for Nick to enforce it, he's got so many priorities.
Right, but what about, wait, if it's, instead of expanding?
Well, one, one thing you can look at is, could it be, can you hit it by, um, not allowing the image to change, or is it...
Right now, the bylaw says that the image is only allowed to change every thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes.
Like every thirty minutes, so, and, and then I guess then from the board's perspective, say the image only changed once every thirty minutes, is that make it better or more comfortable for you in terms of safety on the, the public ways?
And then allowing the, the dimensions as is, you mean?
Even if we don't think of the dimensions, uh, say, say we focus first on just the, having the ability to put the message center there, um, if the sign doesn't change, does that make you feel better, Dennis? In terms of once every thirty minutes, or is it still because it's a...
My concerns with these signs and it's, is the brightness. And they, they, they say they can, but I'm sure there's a switch that you can turn that up, or is it, is it just set at one?
It's, the, the one we use and provide is automatic. It doesn't, you, you turn on the setting and it stays on. And I would offer that, I don't know how many people here know KG Sign. I've been with them for five years. We're not gonna mislead the board. We're gonna do what we say we're gonna do. And I can't stress that enough. Just because other people don't do what they say they're gonna do, it's not fair to hold us to it, but I also understand the board's concern that people are just doing what they want to do with these. I promise you, and I'm sure the pools and queues will assure you, that they will stand by the restrictions that the town sets. I don't know if that helps you or not, but I stand strongly, I've been in the sign business since I was three years old. My grandfather started a business in eighteen ninety-nine. I don't, you don't stay in this business this long with not having a decent reputation. And when I joined KG Sign, one of the reasons I joined them is because they've been a leader in the sign industry in this area since nineteen thirty-three. And I can't stress enough, Mr. Michael Hannigan is our general manager, he goes to all your, your town meeting, you have a monthly business quorum, he goes, he attends, he participates. We're committed, we live in town, we work in town, we're committed to our reputation being upheld. We're not gonna, it's not worth the cost of this sign for our reputation to get the board have a bad reputation.
And all due respect, it's not the reputation of your sign because, and, once you put that sign up, you're not gonna be there. So, you know, and, and...
If you have a problem, then you call me, I'll make sure...
And our building inspector's not gonna call you because, because you're not the owner and you're not the sign. You don't, you, are you gonna be, make sure every night that it turns off that...
I will tell you this, if you have a problem, you let me know, I will address it. I don't drive by it every night. I don't live next door. If I lived next door, I would make sure of it, but I, I promise you that, I'm sure they'll attest to that as the owners of the business, that they will abide by the, these restrictions as they exist.
And how does the sign get set for the...
It's automatic, it's programmed right into the sign.
Can we touch that and alter it at all? The automatic adjustment?
Yeah.
No, it's a photo cell, that's kind of what I wanted to...
No, if you, Bob is from, actually from Dactronics, he's willing to address that particular concern.
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to touch on the, the brightness issue. Dactronics is a, a leader in the industry. We're a manufacturer in South Dakota. We manufacture, design everything right here in the U.S. And we, we, we design our products to be code-friendly. We work with cities and towns all over the United States. We actually have a legislation office and we've helped a lot of cities and towns write ordinances. And one of the biggest issues that we always get and we've addressed is the brightness of them. All of our displays have a photo cell on them that reads the ambient light outside and adjusts accordingly, accordingly to the ambient light condition. So even on a cloudy day in the summer, when you get those thunderstorms come through, the display will go down to forty, fifty percent until the sun comes out and then it will go back up. And then at nighttime, it's gonna dim down to, in technical terms, it, it will never be above point-three-foot candles above the ambient light. And that photo cell does, does that every single night. And it's, it's a very simple way to enforce it with a, a simple light meter. And, and we have a lot of cities and towns that do have light meters and you can go out and you can measure it from a hundred feet, there's a simple procedure. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up. Unlike other manufacturers, you know, there's a lot of manufacturers out there today, more than ever before, that make these displays of all different qualities. Some of them don't have photo cells. They, they're the same brightness during the day as they are at night. And that drives us crazy. I mean, it's ruining our industry overall. You know, it's so bright at night, it's like you just want to go in and tell the people to turn that off. I know exactly what you're saying, I see it. Um, I can assure you, I can give you the documentations that the display will dim to no more than point-three-foot candles above ambient light, which is less than a typical fluorescent internally lit sign. Do we have any signs here in Auburn, Joe?
The only one that we've done in Auburn is the air gas, the, that's a Dactronics...
The small red one.
And you, the one that I'm sure drives everybody crazy is the chicken and the sandwich place. And that's a different company, a different manufacturer, a different product that is not being used properly. I believe that, that particular board has that feature, but I don't believe that the people running it are using it. Where, the reason we use Dactronics is for the reasons he just stated. They are conscious of their reputation in, within towns because ultimately, if you guys shut them down, they're out of business. So they're working with towns to, to address your concerns. And this is why it's automatically in the sign, right? I can't do anything about it if I wanted to, and I don't want to because it doesn't need to be any brighter than it is. You see a properly lit Dactronic sign at nighttime and daytime, you can read it and it's, it's not lighting. Uh, we've been, I've been to multiple meetings with Bob and every town has had this concern, they've addressed them, and when the signs have been up, there's been no complaints, feedback, or anything other than, you know what, we like what you did, we're very happy with you. So, again, if reputation is a first concern, I stand behind ours and I stand behind theirs and that's why I recommend it for this project.
What do you think, Larry?
This is a rock and a hard place because I'm trying to conform to the bylaws here. I, I absolutely, um, and I don't want to use the word, but I, I can agree with some of the things that Dennis has said. The fact that, that we are twelve-point-seven square feet versus fifteen square feet, um, that's not, that's not earth-shattering. Um, the fact that by making it bigger, we may be impacting, um, somebody's view.
How about like the special permit criteria in terms of, um, does it, is it, would it be inconsistent with the surrounding area and then, um, traffic concerns in terms of...
Well, the traffic concerns, I think, would be what I just mentioned, that if we did require that it was bigger, we would be impacting traffic more than if we left it the way it was, okay? Because you're just taking away a view, especially if anybody coming up the street because the sightline will be down Southbridge Street. As far as conforming to the area, we really don't have that much to compare it to. It is a business area, there's no doubt about it. I, um, I absolutely think that that issue where, I, I don't think anybody would have any solid grounds to say that, oh, it doesn't conform to the area, so we can't allow it. I, that, that I would discount. And I would say the safety factor of keeping it this size versus the larger size, um, I would think that that definitely has some merit. Merit enough to leave open the discussion of twelve-point-seven to fifteen. I think that's where the, um, that's where the discussion should be. As far as the, uh, the center, the message center changing and conforming to the timeframes in the bylaws, I don't see any problem with that at all. I, I personally don't see any problem with that at all. I think the, the discussion and the issue again is, um, on, on leaving the sign size as it is to be less obtrusive. I, um, at the risk of, of trying to read people's minds, I would think the intent here was to make it look nice instead of this huge thing.
Bob, do you have any, uh...
In terms of, uh, special permit criteria, do you see any, any, uh, concerns that you would have from, um, any safety on the road, particularly...
You know, after reading through all the criteria, uh, and I know I'm projecting into the future here, but it's the nine-three-five-three, the impact on the town's educational facilities, being the fact that there is a future school being built there. Otherwise, it meets all the other criteria as far as I can read. You know, uh, town meeting sets the bylaws, we are allowed, I think, somewhat, uh, a little bit of interpretation in terms of, as we mentioned, the square foot of the sign versus the illuminated part of the sign. And I also see the value of helping a small local business, which is very difficult an economy to survive in. So, those are just my two cents for what it's worth as far as the impact of the area is concerned. We have, uh, larger signs on car dealerships that we've authorized in that area. Um, in fact, the Elks actually has an illuminated sign with a message board on it already.
They do?
Um, so the other criteria, the only thing I'm really concerned with, I guess, really would be is we're opening Pandora's Box. And if everyone steps up to the plate now and suddenly wants one of these illuminated signs, I mean, we have dentists, we have chiropractors, I mean, we are gonna have big, giant, smiley teeth and, you know, different things like that now. So that's the only really, my concern is, that's where I'm trying to strike a balance to be able to maintain...
It's tough. I mean, to address the, you know, the bigger sign, one, the setback takes care of anything. We, we went to a bigger sign, we said that's a safe, if it was the full sixty. And now do we say, all right, someone wants twenty feet or fifteen feet, they might as well say, well, we can go to sixty. So if he's only got forty and we're going twenty more, then, so we're going to fifteen, so that percentage goes right out the window with that kind of argument. So, I mean, you're either going with it or you're not.
Right.
Can I just ask, is it possible, sir, to make the particular illuminated portion of this sign, the twelve-point-seven square feet, or are they subject to strict standard sizes?
Well, within inches, we make them as standard sizes. I'm not sure where are we, Joe, within the...
Where are we at now?
How do we handle the colors? Yeah, that's...
Oh, I mean, what was the...
How do we do that?
Well, Nick, Nick said...
Okay. How do we handle the color?
Bring the yellow, green.
Yeah.
With the viewing area or the cabinet?
Um, in...
I mean, you only talk to him when, when twenty...
The red, green, yellow.
It's right next to a stoplight.
That's absolute, that, I mean, it's, they are made within standard sizes. I mean, we could go a little bit shorter with the display, but...
And Nick said that that's, and, and we could...
No, myself...
I'm just trying to strike a balance here and try to see what I'm up with a reasonable conclusion for all parties concerned.
The other thing to, just to consider is you also, your town has a height restriction. So if you're making a sign bigger, it's only gonna go wider because you can't go tall. And your restrictions are kinda, they're, I don't, they're contradicting one another and I understand where, where you're coming from with the argument. Other cities and towns have said, you only allow twenty-five percent of maximum allowance. So the verbiage is slightly different in Auburn and I understand if it's what you, what you provide, so that's okay. Uh, but other towns let you go taller. Auburn's restricted with height and if you start going wider, then it gets, does it safer because it starts tucking behind the building now? Does that make it safer or harder to read? And if it's harder to read, does that affect safety? It's a, it's a, I just, I, and like I said, I designed this sign myself and I, I purposely didn't go to maximum because I didn't think we needed to. A, because I misunderstood what I was allowed, um, but also because I didn't want it to be too big. I wanted it to be big enough to get their message across so you can see it, you can read it, and it's not too big of a distraction, it's not anything other than it tells people who they are, where they are, and what they do. To me, that's the philosophy of a sign. Who you are, where you are, and what you do. And that's what this, that's all this sign needs to do. It doesn't need to be big, but to get the message center, which is the most significant part of this project, if it has to be, it can be. So I, I leave it to the board to determine what's best for the town and will it act accordingly.
Now, see, Nick, I have a question for you. Thank you. Um, when, on the bylaws, when it says no sign shall be illuminated more than thirty minutes before opening or after closing?
So, but on a message board, can they leave, still have?
No, that's a, that's for, that's for every sign, so...
Okay.
Any sign that's, that's illuminated needs to be shut off and turned on. We have a major issue that we're going on with that in town. I don't have enough paper to send out the, the letters right now, so, but it, that is something that is going to be addressed in, in the future. But yeah, that means the entire sign, not, not messages, not this, the, when the...
Because I believe your store closes, it's, you don't stay open that late.
Latest is seven o'clock, um, in the morning, or evening sun. We have seven and the earliest, we open is ten.
Okay.
And then seven.
And that seven would be at, at a certain time of year?
No, we, we did seven all year.
All along, so even in the wintertime?
Yeah.
I was just trying to establish if it was summer where it would be light anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And Dennis, your concern was, um, if they were, to avoid red, yellow, and green?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the bylaw. The reason of that is especially at intersections with stoplights because red, green, and yellow are our stoplights.
That's to be addressed with the messages. We can avoid using the red, green.
That would, I would think, would be...
It's critical.
That's cast in stone.
That's the beauty of this, this, you can create the, the design and if we say no red and green, to be honest, it's not their colors anymore. So they're, they're like blues and so, blues are watercolors, so they're no, I don't think there's any problem avoiding the red and green. It's, it's can be part of the, if it's a condition, again, any of the conditions you put in a certain time, we will abide by. And as far as the red and green, I don't, I didn't see that and I, we can avoid that. That's really the beauty of this.
Okay. I mean, um, it's kind, I'm trying to take a temperature of the board, too, in terms of... I think we all kind of got different opinions on, uh, you know, some pros and cons in terms of how we feel. Um, you know, we, I think we definitely, um, listened to everyone's opinions in terms of, you know, what they felt as well. And, um, you know, it's quite a few restrictions in the bylaws in terms of what they can do. So I don't know, does anyone have any general comments in terms of...
Yeah, again, again, it's tough, these are...
I'll make a comment for you if you want, and, and that would be that, um, the, as was mentioned, the, the latitude that we have as a board in enforcing the bylaws and providing good judgment. And in this case, I think my judgment would be that leaving the sign as is versus increasing the size would be the, the better course to take.
I'm leaning...
So leave it just as is. So that, there's my temperature.
I mean, let's not forget, too, I mean, he's got fifty-two feet of advertising here. So, you know, pools and queues and spas is basically pretty large. So you're going to know what, what's there.
Well, I, I do think that, that you might, and when I first looked at this, that, that, and I looked, and I, I was taken back by that and then seeing something below it. But we recently gave the okay to a sign where multiple businesses were in the same building. So that if I look at this as that type of situation, as if they were signs unto them, unto themselves, individual signs, then it doesn't, it, it doesn't really hit that bad for me. It's, it's a sign, and everything does fall right within, if you took, took out the message center, okay, and just put a piece of plywood there, it, everything meets, meets the bylaws that we have.
Exactly. And then, and again, the issue is the electronic message center part.
Yep.
That was a, a big issue. That is the only issue here because he meets everything else. So, I mean, the, the, these are tough. And, and again, I can't stress enough that they were, they're meant to be because that's the only reason why we even have one of them in town, because town meeting says, okay, we will allow that with this.
And again, I would consider those guidelines, good guidelines, they're, they're what the town wanted. And they are the guidelines that we have to operate around. But the mere fact that they have a zone, we are a zoning board of appeals, nothing fits the written word every time. And that's, that's where our latitude comes in to say, this is really okay. And, or this is not okay.
And we want to be consistent.
Right.
If I may, Mr. Chair, a question for the building inspector. Nick, the side street there.
Yes.
In between the dentist office and the Plaza property, would that be within the 200-feet restriction of a residence, do you think?
No.
Okay. Just want to make sure before.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that, there's, there's significant distance between that. I mean, we're probably looking closer to 500 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we ready to close the public hearing? Anyone, have you had a comment, say anyone wants to hear or anything? I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, here's the tough part.
Discussion, or?
Discussion, or?
I mean, for me, I mean, you know what the problem is? Again, it was like he was stated before, we have a bad taste in our mouth with these.
Yeah.
Because they've just been abused.
Right.
Honestly, I don't, I, I don't know one that's even turned off at any time. We have one on the, where the old racketball club on the wall there flashes all night long. We have the one down at the airco on 20. It's on, pretty bright. I don't know, I'm sure that one is, if you put a meter on it, it's way brighter. It's, I don't know, I, I just, I don't know how we can enforce it. I don't know how, how it could be done. I mean, it's just.
Well, there, there are, there are ways to enforce it. As I said, it, it's taken me a little bit of time to catch up with everything that's been going on in town since I've been here. It's, it's been about a year and a half now, so I've, I've worked on a few things. The, the signs are, are in, I, I've put together a three-year progressive plan on how I wanted to adjust the department and get there. And signs are coming up as part of one of the next phases. And we'll handle it the same way that we handle the parking situations and the same way that we handle some of the other noncompliant issues is that we will issue letters out to everybody that do have the illuminated signs stating that this is what the bylaw is. We are requiring you to comply with it. We will give you the opportunity to adjust your lighting to comply with it. If you do not, the next stage is we're going to start fining you. And, and once, once you hit somebody's wallet, they, they tend to start complying. The fact that there hasn't been a significant enforcement issue on these lights is the reason why everybody does it. But once you start hitting their bottom line, you're going to start seeing people turn off the lights. So that's, that's a stage, and, and if it gets to that point, then that's what we need to do. Hopefully, you know, we can, we can start solving the problem by issuing the first letter, and people will be made aware again of what their requirements are. And, and if not, then we take it to the, to the next stage, and, and we move forward with that.
We definitely have a timer anyways.
We can't take it either. Okay, and then, then one thing I, you know, I definitely, is the, the lights next to the, you know, the colors next to a stoplight. The one at 20 and South Street is the most, is the most accidents in town at that light. And it's just a coincidence that you have a green and red bright as can be right there. I don't think it's a coincidence. It's definitely, definitely something caused by that time, and to this point, it's still there. But someone's, you know, I think that's where, where it's next to a stoplight, at least they got to conform to that part of it, you know, without a doubt. It's, it's safety, and that doesn't comply with, with the, with the criteria for that.
So we can make that a condition, no?
Well, you don't have to make it a condition. It's, it's a bylaw.
Right.
We shouldn't have to condition things that are, are already there.
Okay.
So that's my comments for the, for these kind of signs. I mean, you know, actually, I wish I never voted for it a second time at town meeting, but I did. So I didn't think it was going to get out of hand like it did. So, and I don't think anyone at town meeting thought it. And as far as, you know, Larry, your comment, I mean, we're, we're supposed to defend those bylaws, not, 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 you know, say, well, we're the board, and we're going to do it anyway.
I think the lesser of two evils in this case is to use the latitude and good judgment that we've been given. And in this particular case, being that we've got really 2.3 square feet out of this whole sign that, that is in question. And I think our good judgment here is to say, I, at least my, my good judgment would be to say, I'm fine with it.
Ian, you don't feel that there's a significant impact on traffic, or just the general character of the area?
I'm on the fence. I mean, I mean, I could, I could see it's a, seems reasonable. Not, not that we want electronic signs all over town. I mean, I, we definitely.
There is a bylaw that allows for them at this point.
Right.
It's been agreed upon by the citizens of Auburn.
And this one, I think they, they demonstrate in terms of pretty close fit, and it's almost we, again, it's almost we feel comfortable.
They won't be showing offensive messages. You'll see something, you know, a pool.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to either approve or disapprove the special permit with the dimensions requested.
I'll make a motion that we grant a special permit under 767 for electronic message center at 760 Salford Street. Subject and the permit subject to the dimensions herein described as is, and with a special notation maybe, that this electronic message center shall conform to.
The list of the bylaw. 7.6, 7.1 through.
Yeah, there's the, you're going to have to.
Shall conform to the bylaw regarding the use of colors, the not use of colors, red, yellow, and green. Just a special notation for that.
Probably the way to do it, because what we're going to be doing is granting relief to certain parts of this. One of them, I think we're going to have to address, is the, the size part of 7.6. The application was just on. So we're going to have to amend this to also grant relief from 7.6 itself, because that's what we're referring to there, correct? If we're going to.
You're talking to the signage table, correct?
Yeah, we're going to be granting relief from the, from the size requirement, so we're going to have to address that specifically.
Okay. So grant relief for the dimensions.
And we're not granting any relief from any other part of the bylaw.
Right. 7.6, from, wait, I believe it's 25% up to the.
Right.
The, what the actual measurement was.
And then seeing how the board might want to feel on this, of course, it is a special permit. You could do, you know, see how it goes in a year, or put it to just this owner, only because they have agreed to abide by it and not turn it up, and the next owner, or if they should sell, and it has that light.
I'm against, I would be against that. That's up to the code enforcement officer to make sure he takes care of. I would be against putting any other restriction on it.
Well, Dennis said, but how about if we tie it just to the current.
No, I'd be against that. That, that, that hampers any business owner, should they want to go ahead and sell a business, because part of their business, okay, is, a lot of their business, I'm hoping, is generated through the sign. And if there is an issue where we have to approve a new, a new owner or anything like that, okay, that diminishes business value in and of itself. So I would be against putting a further restriction on it.
How about the type of retail establishment? The same type, you know, not so much the owner per se, but the retail pools and.
Well, I think, special permits don't go.
No, it's, special permits can't, you can't restrict that on, on, on a special permit. That, that is, that is something that is in our usage table per the zoning district itself.
Right. But where you can, special permits and anything, you could, variance go with the land. This can go, you can, you can condition it. And it's not that they're going to take it away, it's just that they have to come before the board to say what they're going to do with the sign.
I am against putting any further restrictions on it, period.
I was going to say additionally, though, too, where, where this, if, you know, we, we don't know that this is going to happen, we're talking in theoreticals here, but if they did ever decide to sell the place and the sign got refaced, the refacing of the sign requires a building permit, sign's permitted anyway. So at that point, that would be reviewed for compliance in the beginning, and if there were any adjustments or changes, it would be brought before the board again anyhow.
Okay, so the special permit is for granting relief to the dimension requirements, and then just a special permit allowing the electronic message board sign?
I'll second the motion, since we've done with that part of the discussion, I think.
That was a long discussion.
Dennis, you got another comment?
No, no?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll go with this one.
Okay. Great, so you're approved for the zero. Sorry it took so long, but.
The question was more, I know a variance, you have to attach to the D. Is this thing to be recorded as a variant D because of a special permit, or is it just variance?
Just variance.
That's what I was going to say. It has to be attached to the D, it doesn't matter they sell it.
No, it's special, special permits don't have to get attached to the D.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
Oh, motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Let's see what does, what this does to the next one. When you say, well, we got to get 60 feet out of it, and you say, oh, let's make the, ah, that's okay.
Good luck.
This one's a little different.
This one's a lot different.
All righty. Okay, so now we have a, we have a 715 applicant KG Sign Group, Inc., requesting a special permit under 7.6.7 electronic message center and section 7.6.1 table with signed dimensions of the Auburn bylaws for direction of electronic message sign 20.6 square feet at 31 Auburn Street. Good evening.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm Joe Buckholz, again, with KG Signing Graphics, representing Dr. Bill Mako, who is here to discuss any concerns. Before I even say anything further, I again, I've misinterpreted the laws again on this one, because I did not see the, the restriction of the size. But my question, we, we wanted a larger size because it's a, we wanted to put a projecting sign on the wall. And when I was talking with Adam in planning, he said it, it may be considered as a pylon for extra size. And I, I understand if it's not. But that's why we did a, on the wall sign, we could attach it to a pole of the existing sign, we thought it would look better on the building. And that's where we, he, he thought it might be subject to the size of the pole sign, but if it's not, I understand, and we may, if it, if it is, we may ask for a continuance so we can readdress our sizing and come up with a different plan that more meets the zoning. Because, again, I clearly misunderstood what I was told. And, I mean, I don't think it's excessive. I think nine is really very small for these type of signs to be able to read, which is what I was told it was allowed if it was considered a true wall sign. 15 is, is, it's a little bit bigger than the allowable, we were asking for a variance on, or a, a, a special permit allowing a little bit bigger. If, if the board would rather us reconsider and come up with a different plan, because the problem with these signs is you're somewhat restricted to how you can build them for visibility. This is a different style of sign, which is strictly for text. There's no real graphics going on this. Dr. Mako wants to advertise the health services he provides, as well as new treatments that he, as he comes into practicing them, as well as inform the public of health concerns, health threats, and public service-type messages. Again, I.
Did Adam speak with you about the, because it's a wall sign, and that you, you got a flag sign, wall signs can't protrude more than 18 inches from the wall? Did he ever, did he go through that with you at all?
I wanted to defer this to you, actually, because I know this is your area of expertise.
Yeah, I mean, we don't really have the flag signs. If they're attached to the wall, it, it, basically, a wall sign can only protrude 18 inches. So I.
Well, that, well, like I said, I, again, I, I reviewed this, I thought it was okay to present it. The other thing is, if you look at the drawing, and you see the picture of the green sign that says feel great naturally, that's a freestanding sign on the property. In theory, the sign would look no different if I extended that pole up and mounted it on the pole, and it becomes a pole sign. Or we could put a pole in the ground and it's mounted on a pole. So I guess my question to you is, is, is something like this amenable to the board? If we make it a pole mount and understanding only allow one freestanding sign, and if I address that with a different design, would that, would the board be acceptable to that? Or are there other things I should consider before I, because I understand you're not happy with me right now because I didn't understand your zoning, so.
You want to adjust some of this, or? My only, let me ask you, the, the reason for the flag sign, I'm assuming so you can hit traffic both ways.
As opposed to putting two signs on the wall, one on each side, it's, it was a, I think it's a more attractive look to do this. But we could have, the sign comes in two parts, and you can mount one on each end of the wall in the building. But I don't know if that's really in the best interest of the town. Now, is it considered two message centers, even though it's really one? You know, I don't know how you'd, I didn't think you'd react well to that, that much I was kind of sure on.
There's not a lot of frontage in the front there.
Well, there's the other thing. I mean, you're within the setbacks, you're not even, there's no way to, you know, I don't know how you even put a sign going this way in the front.
Well, if you look at above the feel great naturally part, that wall is perpendicular to the street. You could mount it on the wall there, and on the other end of the building, you could mount the other half on that end of the building. But is that considered two signs now?
Yeah, but if it's, you can have two wall signs.
Okay, well, I, like I said, I figured asking for one wall sign was, was enough for the message center. I didn't think you'd let me get two of them. And plus, it was not going to hang out over city property. I, I could put a pole in the ground, I just didn't think it was necessary, but if it's.
Yeah, but I don't think you'll, you'd with, you'd be 10 feet back.
Yeah.
That's, well, that was the other issue.
Well, yeah, you got to conform to that.
There's an existing freestanding sign. Do you get to grandfather use of that, is, or you have to make it conform? Is that, that's a question.
If, if you are increasing an existing nonconforming sign, that would require an additional special permit for, for the increase of the, the existing nonconforming use.
So it is something that could be considered. I'm just, I'm asking, so I want to make sure I present.
If you're, technically, if, I think it's part of the sign, well, if you, if you change the sign as location. as location, you gotta bring it up to code, so you really don't wanna be changing it, because then you're gonna be looking at bringing it in to conforming to the rest of the bylaw. I mean, this one's a little tougher than even the other one. I mean, this one is...
And I just wanna point out to you, Mr. Natale, that 7677 Electronic Message Center signs shall meet the dimensional requirements outlined, and they shall, on 7678, only be one electronic message center allowed per property. So, even if you did, even though considered at one sign, and you split it in half...
That was my biggest concern with that.
I think in that particular spot.
And then, you're in a different zone here. It's, I think this zone is only 10% of the sign.
It was 10% of allowable wall sign, which is nine, and when I, that's what, that's... Well, no, I, it was told if you allowed 10% of the wall sign, because if it's considered a wall sign, he said it's 90, you're allowed 90 square feet, and that would make it a nine-square-foot sign. But he said, "Because it's projected, it may be considered to take allowance of size by the freestanding sign." That was something that Adam had said when I was asking about this sign. And again, I'm not arguing, I'm just pointing out why I came up with this design.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how Adam even thinks that makes sense, because, you know, it's just hypothet...
Well, he knew we had to ask for...
Then you would just make the sign this big, because hypothetically, you can, so why do that? Why put a percentage? Just say, you could have a sign up to here. It's, he's, that's an interesting interpretation you came up with.
But we, he did say, we had to, we would ask for a variance of size requirements. We are asking for a variance of size requirements, part of this particular, we do know we need a size variance or a size special permit. We did, we knew that was part of a, we knew that was an argument we would have to make, uh, but the other ones that have come up since are new to me, so I'm a little... Now, if you interpret your bylaw, does that mean he has to have 90 square feet of building sign to be able to put nine square feet of wall sign up?
Not wall sign, electronic wall sign.
Well, that's what I mean. If he wants to put a wall...
Yes, that would be, that would be a yes.
So, he'd have to put 90 square feet of sign on the building?
You have to put 90 square feet up there. That's how much the town doesn't want these now.
Right.
And that's how we're gonna interpret it.
Well, if he has 90 square feet of wall sign, he probably doesn't need this as much.
There you go.
But, it's, then you have to put manual messages up there, and never, those are never safe.
Well, we've been doing years and years of had sign, I still don't have an electronic sign, and I don't have a big building. Um, we've gone, we've, we've had done business without these electronic signs, believe it or not. I know they're, they're easier, but the towns, they're, they consider, you know, some towns don't, don't allow them, don't have our bylaw. They consider it a blight a little bit on the town.
Yeah, and, and as far as the, the use of these signs, there are multiple studies how much they increase foot traffic, and there's so many four things for as a business end of it, that's what's driving them, and...
And the residence end of it is driving the restrictions on it, so...
But, it is, it's not near neighborhood, it's not, it's not affecting houses, which is a big concern. It is on a, it's somewhat of a business street.
And you're 200 within a residence on that, right there on...
I don't think so.
Yeah, there's a, the house next, there's a house next door.
It's a rental property, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, I can see it in the picture.
It's a residential, yeah, it's, it's a residence.
Yeah.
Within 200 feet of the sign?
You're probably within 50 feet of the sign. That white building is a residence.
Oh.
Oh, is there? Oh, I didn't know that. Never even saw it.
Now, do you measure it by the edge of the building or the sign, with the 200 feet? Would you measure it from here, or from the edge of the...
You'd probably from the sign, but it's...
I, I, I thought those were all businesses. I didn't even know there was a house there. Because of, on the zoning, it was all zoned highway or local business on the zoning map.
Yeah.
So, I thought, I went by the zoning map.
Yeah, there's houses in, in, well, every spot, every zone there is, so...
So, I get, so, do you wanna...
What do you wanna do with this?
I think I'd like to continue and maybe meet with the building official and get a better idea of what we can do, and reevaluate what we're doing.
The only issue we might have, Larry, you're gonna, you're not gonna be here, right, next month?
I will not be here.
So, you won't be here, so then, so either Marsha or Rick will have to watch the meeting, since we opened it tonight?
Uh, well, he, if he's, we're gonna continue, or is he gonna withdraw?
I'd like to continue with, but I wanna present maybe a better plan, that you might be more within what you're looking for, but I have to figure out what that is right now. So, I'd like to continue it and submit a new app, a new drawing, or do I withdraw and resubmit? I don't, you know, I'd rather continue and just come up with a new idea.
Well, it looks like you're gonna, you should probably go through the, the bylaw, and there's different areas you're definitely gonna need relief from. We've probably hit on about four or five of them, so...
If it's amenable to the building inspector, I'd like to meet with him and review what would be more acceptable.
No, that's, that's fine. We can, we can set up a time.
I'm, I'm, I'm not here to argue. I wanna, I wanna work with you, I don't wanna work against you, so... Whatever I can do to come up with a plan that's more acceptable to you, I mean, I would appreciate it.
Do you wanna continue it to, uh, next month, or...
Whatever's amenable to the board.
Because I'm not gonna be here. What makes it easier?
Oh, well, if you're not here...
If he's gonna withdraw or continue, what makes it easier?
Well, either, as long as they can see a copy of the, of the meeting, they can, we have a Mullen rule here in town, so they can, they can be up to date, and...
Correct. They're, they're allowed to miss one meeting and watch that on tape, and still be considered a voting member on, on the subject.
I would think then a continuation would be appropriate for this particular situation.
Um, before you close it, could I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure, still open.
Well, uh, is nine, that nine square feet gonna be written in stone, or is there a little bit of wiggle room? I'm not asking for 15, but the reason I'm saying is, the way these are configured, I may only get to seven, but I could get to nine foot, 9.6, or 10 square feet for the way they're configured. I, I'm asking if there's any leeway, if, and if there's not, I just would like to know. I mean, I don't expect you to approve it, but would you consider it?
From my point of view, I don't think that I could personally give you any leeway prior to your presentation.
That's fair.
But if you could bring some type of documentation to educate us on how the signs are constructed, and how they are in terms of square footage, how that works, that might help your situation. But again, I can't make any promises on that.
I understand. I'm not asking for you to decide, I'm just looking for a little advice as to what you'd really like to see. Given the fact that you don't, nobody really likes these things, but everybody kinda wants them, so it's kind of like a balancing act. What, 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 what would you like versus what we can do?
Okay, and just, just go, as you go through the balance, no, no, it, it is by, by, also by zone, and this one got shrunk from 25% to 10%.
Yep, no, I, that's what the...
So, it does, it depends on how much, you know, we can, you know, obliterate the bylaw.
If this sign was in the nine square feet, there's, but the flag sign is not an option, is, am I understanding that correctly?
The flag sign is on a, on a wall, you're, is, is not allowed. It's, you know, unless it's 18 inches maximum.
All right, I'll have to figure that one out.
Unless you made it 18 inches by 12 feet long, and made the, let it scroll down that way.
Yeah.
They do that in some countries.
They do, in fact.
Okay, so, uh, so we'll continue it to the next meeting, which is, um...
March 20th.
March 20th at 7:00 PM? I'll, I'll take a motion to continue it?
I'll make a motion to continue it, until the March 20th meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, to be clear, am I, even though it's, it's not gonna be voted on, is it something I'm gonna be prepared to present that, or is it a mo, a meeting to meet the next meeting when he can be here?
No, actually, I mean, if you don't think you'll be ready, then...
No, I'll be, I can be ready. I just don't know if I'm supposed to be. That's what I'm asking.
Yes, what we'll do is, we can set up a meeting, we can go through the bylaws with you. If you fix your package, and you would submit some, your additional information, so that the board has time to review it, um, and then you make your presentation at the next meeting.
Okay, so, but it is a presentation, it just may not get voted on until the next meeting, until he gets back?
No, it'll get voted on, Nick. It'll be voted on.
Okay, I didn't know, I, I didn't understand how you continued.
Well, what we can do is, because, um, you'll need three votes to get an approval, so, um, one member won't be here, so that will leave just three of us, so we can ask a couple of the other members who weren't here to know if they could watch a rebroadcast.
I just wasn't sure what...
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, um, I'll take a motion on Stacy's minutes from... I forgot what month it was.
You all board together?
From January 16th, to approve. Are any concerns or anything about him?
No motion to approve, okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, did you guys, um, get a chance to, there's been a lot of emails going around about, um, who wants to go to the seminar at Holy Cross? Did anyone think about that?
Yeah, I'd like to go.
But again, I won't be.
Oh, you won't be here, okay.
Put me in for that.
Yes, I would like to attend that.
I think I printed, um, oh, no, I think if we continue to, we don't close it, right?
No, we don't close it. Do we have one of the semis now? Or you could, you could just tell her who's going?
I think I remember, um, you just, you just show up there, too, and you don't have to really tell them what seminars you're gonna take, because you just go to a room, whatever. So, it looks like, um, so Bob, Megan, myself, Dennis, do you think, um, do you think, um, Marsha would wanna go? Because I don't know.
She loves, yeah. I would say she would. I, I would say everyone should go if they can.
Okay. And then, um... I mean, they, they seem pretty flexible, even for last minute.
Yeah.
Nick, is it something, can you ask Sealer if he can, um, sign up Dennis, myself, Bob, Marsha? And what about Rick? Does Rick work on weekends, you know, or anything? I don't know if he's gone in the past.
Don't know.
Is there any electronic material that...
Oh, they'll have it.
Oh, yeah, there's all kinds of hands out. We'll grab it.
Yeah.
Please do.
Oh, it's all, it's really good stuff.
Maybe, um, maybe, maybe if we do, um, Dennis, myself, Bob, and, uh, Marsha?
Um, Megan actually said she wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Megan.
Oh, yeah, no, that's, that's fine. We'll, uh, we'll get you guys signed up.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have any other business or anything?
You wanna take this now, or just need the rest of that blank?
Oh, sure, I guess we could maybe give these to, uh, if they can read your handwriting.
I know.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to close the hearing, meeting?
I'll make a motion to close.
Second?
Say it all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, let's go.
All right.